Oh, really?
An athlete, an athlete. It's something like.
On my pushchair.
To the best of all of them.
All activities to the school by law. In the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. A nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes for the chair to be approved. Bills to be approved and paid for July. All in favor? Okay. Seal coding. Deciding where to pull the funds from. Is that a canceled decision?
Well, if it's, if you have it in your budget, then that's within your authority. So if it's already a budgeted amount, now if you're having to reopen your budget, then you want canceled. Does that make sense?
We don't have enough in the funds to do it, right? No budget for it. But this budget is ours.
Well, we do in the market.
Yeah.
Well, we have to.
Well, we have to.
From one category.
Okay.
So that's what this chart is. I put together kind of the unexpendable balances. And how much the seal core expense is. And what you possibly could take from other categories. And then I also, I don't know how this works. It was on new, but you know, like there is the savings. So I guess that's a question for you guys from later.
The same, oh, your carryover?
Yeah, like.
You can use your carryover for capital improvement projects, but we just have to open your budget to, you know, towards, well, we get, we get over it towards the end of the year. So you have to have a public hearing to reopen the budget. But we can combine that with your budget hearing coming up. So it's not a big deal, you just have to have a public hearing. Like, for example, every year, weeks, and then they reopen the budget to clean up everything, you know, at the end of the year. Things change. So it's not like, it's not like it's a big deal. Unless you do have a process you got to.
So, Robert and I have been going through the budget, most of it. And there's, there are quite a few of these items that's way over budgeted. And we figured we could take the money from there.
Yeah, so the fact, just remember, the key, you've got to stay out of your enterprise funds. So if it's those amounts, so your water fund and your sewer fund can't.
Right, it's all from general.
Okay, as long as it's all from general, then, you know, you can take from those amounts, but you reopen your budget to shift around. See what I'm saying? Your expenses would be different. But if you have the money, you know, if the funds are there, I mean, you can use them for that.
You just have to.
You just have to.
Be open.
Basically notify the public.
This is the new budget accounts, right? Because you're going to move significantly, you know, if you're moving amounts from X, Y, and Z accounts into street majors. Well, that's different than what you had published before. So you'd be giving the public notice and now your street major budget is much bigger, but these other budgets are smaller.
So basically, it's going to have to go into next year and part of the public hearing of the budget stuff that we're doing anyway.
Yeah, well, so you can go ahead and move through, you can move forward on the project. You know, because you have funds available, but then you would have to publish, do the public hearing on the new budget.
So we can go ahead with the project.
If you've got the money, you can go ahead with the project and redo your budget, and you can combine those, that public hearing and the public hearing, you'll have this all for next year's budget. You just have two different publications. So one night we'd have two different public hearings.
What are about to take the money out of, what is it, what do they call it?
Well, their savings.
Yeah, your carryover. Yes, you can take the money out of savings, that's what, that's what it's for. Your carryover, you're saving for capital improvement damages.
So we could take the money that we need out of savings without having a public hearing, you know.
No, you still have to have a public hearing.
Still have to have.
But it's just because your budget's going to be different. So when you published your budgets last year, that's what you gave the public notice of.
Right.
Now you're going to spend more than what you gave a notice of, so you need to give the public notice of that.
Well, let me ask you this, Ed. Would we be better off to take the money out of savings? And use that? And then, uh, go ahead and, uh, I don't know what I'm trying to.
Well, so I think, I think we'd be better off using it out of your current budget. Because you've saved, you know, in this budget, this budget, this budget. So you're going to keep your rainy day fund and not touch it, and you're just going to use the budget you had.
But not take it from it.
Yeah, because then you're still having your rainy day fund.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Because it'd be no difference to your personal finances, right? If you had your savings account, leave it alone, and you save enough money this year on whatever expenses to buy that car. When your current budget didn't change that, you just, you did a better job of saving money than you thought. But you leave your savings account alone.
So, do we need to go through and cut the, cut, where do we cut the budget tonight, or?
No, no, you can do that when we go through that budget process. So if Robert's gone through and you have the money, you can do your seal building project, because you want to get that done this year, you know, before, until October. So you want to go move forward and get that done. Then we look at your budget and decide what you, you know, how much you have to shift from one account to another. And then you have your budget hearing so that you give the public notice of what you've done. Like, you're going to want, if you want to move forward, if you're in the seal coach, you need to get on it or you won't be able to do it.
Yeah, they're going to be.
Balls coming fast.
They're going to be coming in here any time to track seal.
Yeah.
If you want to do that a month before you chip seal or something.
Yeah, like I said, balls coming fast.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
You're telling me.
So yeah, if you've got the money, I would go ahead and get the project done, if you accept those bids. And then, I'd say we're worried about the budget process to correct that this morning.
Okay.
I'm just here.
Don't give me that.
There's your numbers.
Don't give me that. Number five, sewer ponds. Reek?
No, it's under budget. So you guys vote on that later when we have to reopen them.
Sewer ponds and redirecting Ido Supreme cost ability. How do you, uh, how do we go, how do we approach Ido Supreme on this?
Call that's for meeting?
I've already done that, you haven't called me back.
Well, what have we found out on it? Does this guy know anymore?
That's what we're going to have to do, is get back and back to what they're coming. Robert had been down talking to them and trying to figure out how much they have about. And they seem to think it's just the bat services, and I, I'm going, wow, that's a lot of bat services. And then the little bits of sand and gravel always make me wonder.
That's got to be coming from them. Donna?
That's when we had this project yesterday, or day before, that had water running over the top of our sewer. I was down there trying to find out if there was gravel coming at that point or wasn't. And I hadn't located anyone anywhere else in town. Just on Main Street.
I got one for you, I found out today, but I'll talk to you after the meeting. So, would you like to be involved in that meeting?
Do you want me to? Because, you know, we need to, basically, you just got to start the conversation. You know, you're going to have to have a conversation with Ido Supreme, and then obviously first. You know, we probably ought to just have a group meeting with Robbie and Ido Supreme and, you know, brainstorm a little bit on different ideas. Right, I'm more than happy to set it up if you want me to.
You want it?
I said, I'm more than happy to set it up.
Are you?
Yeah, if you want me to.
Okay.
Yeah, I see some air. And I, I would, I would like to come to that meeting, and we have this scope worker here, and then with your facility's planning study, obviously. Obviously, whatever flow is coming from Ido Supreme is going to affect that, that amendment to your facility planning study.
The amendment to what?
Your wastewater facilities planning study associated with treatment. Been a couple of months since I've been here, but the last time we talked about, when I was here, we talked about, you have a grant sitting there to write the amendment to the facility's planning study associated with treatment. You have to write that, you have to write that amendment before you can do anything, you know, you have an interest in, in doing something with your treatment plan, and your preference has been expressed thus far as that you'd like to add another, um, lagoon to your treatment system. We have to, we have to address that in your facility planning study first. So, remember, we have a, we have a grant sitting there with the EQ that is available to us, um, for the facility's planning study. We also, um, so we submitted a letter of interest in January of this year, in the council, without council permission to do that, for a, a loan, you know, for the, for the clean water state revolving fund, which is what you pay for your other sewer projects with. We didn't fare very well in that particular, in that priority list, we're seventy-two out of seventy-three. And I knew that we wouldn't fare very well, because we don't, we don't have any violations that are current on the treatment system. And so, um, the grading system they use for those funds rewards systems that have problems. But I just heard, I heard something about a overflow here, that's a problem. That, that mounts you up in the priority ranking for, should, should our facility's planning study amendment show that you should or want to do something with your treatment, um, for expansion or something different, then, um, you know, we want to be higher in that priority rankings, and we can be offered some money for that. And the reality is, based off, we probably go to rural development rather than the EQ. But just like anytime you shop for a loan, you want multiple options. Options as in, you want option, well, in, in anything, really, you want options in terms of what you want to do with your treatment plan. When it comes time to pay for it, you want options, you want more than one offer that you can get on, on the financing. You know, if you're going to go buy a house, you know, it's, it's nice to shop two or three mortgage companies and say, what kind of deal are you going to give me if I, if I use your financing? So that's what we do in, in these projects as well, for sewer water projects. We ask rural development, we ask DEQ, and then we try to put together the best deal for the financing of the project. Who's going to give you the best interest rate, who's going to give you the best grant?
Well, I think DEQ's already approved it, or, I don't know whether they've approved it, but they've already said yes to it, not that it really did.
No, they haven't.
Oh, I thought they had.
You've got, we have to amend the, you know, the facility's planning study down wastewater six, seven years ago. Normally, they make you do, they make you do a plan. If, if you haven't done within one within five years of when you want to do a project, they typically make you redo the plan. When we applied for the grant money, I talked DEQ into accepting that as the facility's planning study and only writing an amendment, so it didn't cost so much. Said, let's just do an amendment, because it's a fairly recent study. And you, and on the previous study, that's what you, that's what you replaced your distribution system with. But there was that, you know, the whole thing with Firth and the treatment and all that, and that's when nothing really got done with the treatment. So, what we had to do is we had to ask DEQ for some grant money through the same program to ask, so we could do an amendment to that original study that was done six, seven years ago. They awarded us that money, and so we have not spent it, we haven't used it, we haven't written the study yet. But the options of the study, we looked at, okay, we can do land application, we can do a big kind of pond, are we going to do a whole different system, or are we going to do nothing? And so we have to present those alternatives to DEQ with associated advantages, disadvantages, costs, and say, this is the one we want to do because X, Y, Z. And then they'll say, they approve that, and then if we want to move forward with that, then we can. If we don't want to move forward with it, I don't know if there's any, I mean, the, what, through the time that I did the seep and drain test, I don't think there were any emergencies with the pond, but I haven't talked to anybody for two or three months in town with you or Guy or anybody.
You've been going down to Firth for a month.
Have you?
For twenty-eight days as of today.
Okay, so, so that says that.
Because our pond wouldn't lose no volume out of it with the cooler weather.
Yeah.
We had an issue that we were staying too full, so we had to go down. We're, we're down about nine inches now, but the truth of it is, is we could not lose the volume off the top.
Yeah, what I'd heard, I don't remember where I heard it, I'd heard that your ponds were full. I said, I don't remember where I ever heard that. Anyway, where we're at in the process is, and that's why, one of the reasons I want to come to council on this, to remind everybody where we're at with this facility's planning study amendment, and make sure that we're still going to proceed in that direction.
So what do we need to do as a councilman?
Nothing, nothing. You don't really need to do anything, I just, I just want to keep everybody abreast of where we're at and informed of what we're doing. But, but when I hear, see a topic like, oh, or if there's some potential impact on the flow, because Ido Supreme may or may not be sending flow that they should or shouldn't be flowing, I said, oh, that, that's going to affect while I write in this facility's planning study amendment. So I would like to be involved in, in that meeting, so that I, otherwise, it won't be addressed.
I hope you get everybody together.
The Bible's in my business. So I, so I guess my specific request after all that explanation was, would you invite me to a meeting? Yeah, can I go? Because I think you'd want me, I think you'd, you think you'd want me there, so.
Well, do we have to do a study?
If you want to do something with your treatment system, then you do.
I don't understand that, because there's only one thing we can do.
Even if there's only one thing you can do, DEQ says you have to write a study before they'll let you do any major change to your system. You have to tell them what you're going to do.
I think they're pretty well aware we want to build another, look at it.
They are, but there's a process. They're not just, you can't just call them up and say, we want to build this. They're going to say, great, why don't you do a facility's planning study? And you say, we have one. We know what we want to do, they understand, you have to do a facility's planning study, that's the rule. So, once you get your facility's planning study, and you tell us what you want to do in writing, in a paper, that justifies to the public, that somewhere you're going to go after, when you do this, you're going to go after, you don't want money to do it, right? Whether it's rural development money, whether it's DEQ money, you want somebody to help you with the money, whether it's grant money or loan money. They can't give you any public money unless you've told the public, it's kind of like your budget, tell you've told the public, not just these people, but everybody in the world. You know, you publish a document that says, we are going to do this, and we want your money to help us do it. You cannot spend public money unless you have, you've told the public what you're going to do, and you've had a public hearing, so they have an opportunity to say, we don't agree with you. We think you're going to, whatever, we think you're going to kill sales if you do that. We think that, and we think there's a better option. We want you to look at this or that. So, it's just a process, and they can't, they can't give you permission unless you follow that process.
Oh, that's not going to accomplish.
The, the amendment is, is twenty thousand dollars, maybe a tan. You know, when we, when we applied for it, a year and a half ago, we went over that, and I've been to your council two or three times discussing that in, in the interim.
We have to follow the rules. Do you like to or not?
You got to kiss your rear men, is what it amounts to. Government re occupancy.
Yeah, don't overshoot the messenger. I just, I just, I didn't make the rules, I'm just informing you of the rules.
Man, we just went through that, when we tried putting the sprinkler system on that pond, the pond manager, he went to it and tried talking to DEQ, and they said that they have this, 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 and some setup and design.
Yeah, you're going to try evaporate, evaporate your honor.
Yeah, we had that figured out to where it worked pretty slick, but then they started coming in with, you got to have an engineer, you got to have a.
This, that, the last thing, and then that's, yeah.
Our fifteen thousand, that we thought we could do it for turned into about a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand.
As a, as a citizen of this country and participant in whatever, is that, that's a, there's no reason you shouldn't be able to do some of this stuff. As an engineer, I said, well, DEQ creates a lot of work for us. I mean, they do. Because they just say you can't do this unless you do these things. Well, okay, I, and I guess that's what I'll do.
If you dealt with DEQ on this end, are they any better?
Oh, in Ido Falls? I like to work with Willie Tuser. Because Willie Tuser was a consultant for a number of years before he worked at DEQ. So he's, I can say he's more practical, he's easier to work with than some others, who's worked in, in different areas. He's practical, I like to use him practical.
Would we be better?
He's still like, you follow the rules, but he's, you know, he's like, this is what the rule says, and this is how, he's more like, this is how you meet that rule.
Are we better off to go with them when they aren't, Pocatello?
I'd like to work with Willie, but I don't know if they'll, I don't know if they'll let you.
They can tell you, you got to work, work with too?
Yeah, they have, you know, they have, they have a region, and then a region is a geographic area. You follow it in the Pocatello regional, or geographic area. When we did the big regional project, it was across the line, so even though you were on the Pocatello side, but Pocatello and Ido Falls were involved in the process, since we're, we're dealing with studying everything, there were cities on both sides of the imaginary line.
So what do we need to do to get the project rolling now?
You write this study, we get it submitted, and then we're, in November, we can apply for, um, CDVG grant, which you've had in the, in the past. We can apply for rural development grants at any time. They typically get funded sometime between October, when the fiscal year starts, and when they pass them. When they finally pass the home improvement spending bill in Congress, so rural development usually kind of stacks up until maybe they get a jam, or you're going, when you hear all the budget discussions, whatever, sometime in the winter is usually where they get it. They find out how much money they have, and what they can spend, or not. You submit another, we'll submit another letter of interest to DEQ in January of next year, and it will help that we overflow this year, because then we can, we're able to say that we're out of capacity in our treatment plan, and all of a sudden, we get, you know, a bunch of points in their scoring criteria, the rating criteria, because we can demonstrate that we're out of capacity. It doesn't matter why we're out of capacity, it's just in the application, it's just, we have, we overflowed. So, they, they go and say, oh, they're out of capacity, that's a, that's an eighty points or whatever.
So, do we as a council have to write that?
Study?
Study.
No, no, you've contracted with me to write the study. You've already contracted with me, you contracted with me about, you actually contracted on that study? I don't know how much history you want. We actually contracted that study about three plus years ago. We didn't write the study then, because we said, there was all this concern about whether your lagoons leaked or not. So I said, let's not write the study till we know whether your lagoons leak or don't leak, because that's a critical piece of information in the study. So we had to go through that whole leak testing thing, seep and drain thing, before we said, let's write the study. Well, that took two, actually took two summers to get that done. But what came back, and the irony is, is if we would have leaked, we'd have went to the top of the list. If, right, because we have lagoons that leaked, but we didn't leak, which means we aren't compelled to spend the money to fix the lagoons. But now we want to expand the lagoon, so that, you know, so anyway, so that's, that's kind of the, the, the brief timeline is, you originally hired me to look at a, an opinion about expanding lagoons, adding another lagoon. Or putting a pump in there, there were some, there were a couple of options we looked at. I came here with Dustin Harvickson originally. Said, but then we looked and said, if we're going to write that study, let's ask DEQ to pay for half of it, and let's make an amendment to your existing FPS. So that's what we did, we applied for a grant money so they could pay for half of it. But then we, then the whole seep and drain, including the leak portion came into play, so we said, let's not, let's not come up with a solution for the lagoons until we know whether we leak or we don't leak, because that will, that will affect the outcome. So we did that, now that's all done, we're good with seep and drain, we're good for ten years on the seep and drain. We, we demonstrated that we don't leak, and they won't have us do that for another ten years. But now we're down to, we need to write the, now that we've got all that out of the way, now we need to write the amendment to your study, so that we can get permission to do what you want to do.
Okay, but what I'm trying to find out is, do we write that, or do you write?
I write it. You sign a contract with me to write it.
Okay. So, is there a timeline on getting that done, or?
Yeah, we want to have it done before the end of the year, so that we can write a, so we can submit a letter of interest in January again, because that's when DEQ accepts those, indicating that we would like, you know, telling them what we like to do and how much money we'd like to them to consider. You know, whether, um, DEQ, with their construction loans, they, they don't do grants, but they have been known to do grant, they can do loan forgiveness. Because their rules don't let them use the SRF money for grants for construction. But they can do loan forgiveness, which accomplishes the same thing. It's not common, but they can. You're more likely to be using rural development money, because they, because where your immediate household income fits with rural development, I think that's how you funded your projects in the past, with a rural development, um, grant loan combination. And with the CDVG grant, usually the CDVG grants are about a half a million dollars, you know, we apply for those. Or they can be up to a half a million. That's a, you know, community facilities grant through the Department of Commerce, the state of Idaho. So the most likely funding source to do what you want to do out of lagoons is a CDVG grant and a, and rural development grant loan combination.
Okay, well, let's go forward with that then.
Yes, yeah. That's, that's mainly why I came tonight, I just, just.
Does the board name it?
Oh, we have?
Oh, there we go. Okay.
The wheels are spinning. The wheels are spinning already, it just takes time.
All right. Okay, are we done with that then?
I'm paying two cents here. They are going to forth right now, they're charging us X amount, they said that they would sign a, if you wanted to run a contract, there is X. They would set up a contract, although Firth puts about six hundred bucks a month, just one on that plant. And if you opt in for a certain amount of water, around two hundred at all times, then you could get it for a lot less than what we're paying right now. But they, they, they would go ahead and sign up a contract, which we've done now so many days a month to them. But they, they, they would go ahead and sign up a contract, which we've done now so many days a month, to them, and keep out of this thing, but that would put us into another option, where we don't have all this other stuff. We just have a contract agreement right there.
See, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sign a contract for that, or anything in the EBS.
Well, I think, that would be one of the topics of conversation, that we get everybody together. You know, that would be one of the ideas, to make sure, because you're gonna always wanna have Plan B. You know, so if you're ready to evolve, you know, this is your Plan B.
There's a long-term contract, or there is just a gallons contract, in person, do you think?
And what they're, and what, and in the facilities, the amendment to the facilities planning study, that would be one of the alternatives, to compare the cost of Firth, the cost of doing your Pocatello lagoon, with the cost of doing land application. There would be about three choices, and we just run through, here's the comparative possibility, so you can make the best decision. I say the best decision, and there's lots of factors that come into the best decision. The cost is a significant one, but there's other things you could consider as well.
If it could cost, it's gonna cost us around five hundred bucks a month to run everything we got to. But with the contract, you'd get away with about three.
To run all our sewer with Firth?
That's what I'm saying, that's what it would cost.
I didn't have any idea it'd be that cheap.
It might be a little bit more, but that's about what, well, if you had a long-term contract with them, that they were taking at a specific rate, and it would just up their running ability of that plant.
What do we do with our ponds?
You start adding them. You use it for overflow emergencies, or you use it for... If Firth got into a flood situation, like a flood pit, and they'd have to back it up, because nothing could go in it down, and so we'd have to hold over it, but that didn't matter. I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know how exactly they'd do it, but I just know, I had a little talk with Oliver about it, about what was going on, and he was saying there's that option, and we could go that way, so...
And one thing, so what we're gonna do is take the information the guy has there, and then one made effort with that writing, so that we have it in the, in the facilities planning study amendment, so that, you know, it's, it's clear, and it's, here's the offer, and writing whatever, and, and then, so you can make a decision based on that. You have five hundred dollars, A, and five hundred dollars for the thousand gallons, or what's the five hundred dollars for?
Uh, a month.
Five hundred a month.
It's about what you're charging us right now.
Just for what you're offering, not for a half a gallon.
Only think about the count, hundred percent flow to them.
Well, that seems like a number that is not sustainable, because they, they're charging their own residents, what? Fifty, forty-five, fifty bucks a month, for each house? Probably what their age is, I talked to Robert about it.
I forget so much, aren't they?
Uh, yeah. I don't, I don't remember what it is, but they got a really good deal on their...
Basically, the price is the cost of running the plant to give, to dispose of, to clean it up, to put it out. Um, that's basically, that, that's running our whole flow ladder. Because we're trying to drop our pond, our bottom pipe down, so we could go back to our ponds. But I wanted to get, hold two feet before I turn it back on, so that we don't get into the same thing we get this, we have this year, where there's an emergency, we're gonna have it during the year.
See, that's why I don't wanna sign a contract with them, because...
Then the contract, yeah, one hundred percent.
Well, there's, there's, I mean, unlimited ways of doing a contract. You could have a contract that says, you know, "Our Plan B is, when we need to, we're gonna send it to you, and it's gonna cost X dollars per gallon." And then if you never sent it to them, you never pay X dollars per gallon. Always have it out, you can turn it in at any time. But I mean, a contract's not a scary thing, you just figure out the best way to happen.
They commented on that, it's like, said, "It could be multiple different avenues of this contract."
Well, you said long-term contract. Well, I guess, the next thing to do would be to get a meeting.
I think you get all the heads together in the pub there, and we just have your Plan A, your Plan B, your Plan C, and then...
All righty.
It sounds like, uh, it sounds like guys talked to Robert since I have. But I think it's like, three weeks ago, I went, three, four weeks ago, I went over there. I just wanted to confirm that they acted fast, and I wanted to make sure what the treatment looked like, because I knew that would be one of the alternatives in the amendment, so I just wanted to confirm with Robert that that was even a possibility, but I didn't talk money or anything, I didn't obviously say that.
The truth of it is, is we run almost the same amount as Firth does. So, so they just kinda double the load.
Well, okay, we'll wait to hear from you.
Is that it for me?
Is that it? Mr. Gary?
Oh.
From there.
All right, thanks Mayor.
You bet, thank you. Humidity cleanup ideas.
Well, so really, we were supposed to look at the ordinances, right?
Supposed to what?
Look at the ordinance.
That's my phone, I just threw it out the door.
Wait, is that the city's phone, or is your phone? Okay, so look at the ordinances, which I did go through that book, and you did that night. They, I think they went through it. I did not see anything in there on cleanup.
I don't, I don't think it had anything.
Yeah, I'm kinda thinking we don't. There is some older, older books that I found, but I haven't gotten a chance to go through those ones. But they, there's not a lot, and it looks very, like, original to cities set up, like, old. So, I don't think it's gonna be in there, but, and then, you called PSI and got dumpster quotes. And so, I wrote down what you told me the other day, which it would cost a hundred dollars a day.
No.
No?
One time. Cost a hundred bucks for them to bring a dumpster?
Two hundred and ten to haul it.
Two hundred and ten to haul it, plus?
Eighty-seven dollars per ton.
Eighty-seven, fifty per ton, when they dump it.
And if you did it on a weekend, there wouldn't be a daily... Daily charge? Oh, during the week, it's five dollars a day, so you wouldn't have that extra five dollars. And then there'd be no tires, paint, bridges, stoves, and no metal.
Batteries.
So, the question is, do you guys want to make an ordinance of something? Do you feel like that crosses the line? Do you want to offer a dumpster day?
I think right now...
Our budget's gonna get shot with a seal coat, why would you say that?
You wanna do a cleanup, you wanna do it in the spring, huh?
That's, that's what I'm thinking, it's a little late to do a cleanup now.
Something you could plan next year, now.
The best cleanups were in the spring, that much you're talking about, the fifty percent of everything that gathered up in them ones is exactly what you mean there.
Yeah. Well, most of them just do, like yard debris, they don't, nobody, I don't think, takes, I don't think, sit out of their own...
Excuse me, it said no metal?
No metal.
Up here, um, what's his name up, up the road here?
Kids down here.
Yes. Well, do they, would they bring a metal, a dumpster down, do they take off any metal?
They buy it, but I think they have to have specific metal to be able to run it in their porch. Usually cast iron, it's not even, it's, it's cast steel.
Well, I'm sure, because I know, I've seen them separating stuff down into other, other dumpsters, I think they resell it, some of the stuff they can't use. So, that, you know, would that be an option, to have them set up a metal, one guy here, will people get rid of the metal junk?
Well, we'll talk to them.
Just a thought.
Or could you offer it to the city members, like, "Hey, we're gonna have a day of just metal, and if anybody in the city wants to take that up to the recycling center, in October?"
I would, so I think people, they dropped off, but then nobody wanted it.
You'd have to go pick it up, like, so the other day, my husband was going, and he offered, like, his dad, and like, so the word kinda got out that they were going, and somebody, I don't remember who it was, anyway, they were like, "Oh, I have a stove, will you take that?" I'm like, "Sure." So, we could offer it out like that, like, "Hey, does anybody wanna do this? We'll have a day of metal, and you can take it up, and you can either keep it yourself, or the money, or you have, like, somebody from the city, like, building it back to the city, like, just have it an option, that if somebody was willing to do that, then we could just have a day where everybody, like, you would have to, whoever was gonna do it, you would have to contact them, and tell them, "This is what I have, will you come pick it up," type of thing. And they have to be there to vote upon, to vote for something, but just so that there's, like, an option to take it.
But you're talking more from a community, kind of community bad idea?
Yeah. Yeah, because maybe there is somebody that would want to, like, Dwayne used to do that. He used to get, um, like, fridges and washers, you know, you'd get a whole train of poly, you'll pick them up and take them up to recycle.
So, then first, you would have to know who wants to do that.
Yep, so we could just, like, put it out there, like, on your, like, even a letter. Yeah. And to see if somebody volunteers, if there's nobody to volunteer, then...
Maybe I'll put a flyer out, it's your next monthly bill, or something.
Are we talking about that last meeting, of maybe, like, making a newsletter, where you talk about some of these things, and try to encourage someone?
I was wondering if you couldn't, basically advertise for, you know, a group of people that are willing to take a little bit of...
Because it could be that somebody wants to get rid of their stuff in here, they should, that means to give it. But if somebody did, wouldn't mind.
I volunteered my husband once.
I've learned my lesson about volunteering your husbands, I was like, "If somebody..."
And throw water all over them, so...
So, that's just a thought, like, if there's somebody that would want to help do that, you could.
So, really, that comes down to, you just need to try to get the word out, and you probably don't wanna do an ordinance. Because I think what you said last time about, like, there's a fine line being an HOA, and encouraging.
Well, so I prosecute for Blackwood Avenue, and they both have ordinances for minimum payments and stuff. And you have to have the enforcement side, which, with you guys talking about police force, becomes difficult, um, because the county's not gonna wanna do it, and you'd have to have somebody that's turning it in to the county, because they're not gonna send letters for you, and things like that. But even, even Blackwood, that's obviously the full police force, it takes, when I, when I take the fine offense to me and I prosecute it, it's usually about a year process, by the time we get anywhere. And it's always the fine line between, is this somebody that just needs help, or is this somebody that's just not doing what they should be doing? Because a lot of times, ninety percent of the time, it's, it's just needing help, you know, they just aren't physically over... You know, but I've had, I've had people that have had to throw in jail, because they just, you know, wouldn't pay attention. Some of those are the ones that, you know, when we get in jail, gets their attention, but some of them are the ones that need help. So, it is, it's a tough deal. Where you guys don't have a staff, I'm not sure how you enforce that.
And we're sure your last one, because we got lots.
It is, they are difficult, you know, like I said, even, even Blackwood, full police force, I mean, you know, they're out certain citations and send letters, and, and we started in the spring, they started with a list of probably two hundred people, and that boils down to probably twelve or fifteen that get cited, so that's when it comes to me. And then I work with them to try and, like, "Here's the problem, here's what we need to do." You know, by this time of the year, now I'm down to probably six or eight of them, you know, that you're trying to, "Come on," you know, but it's, it's, it's tough. The ordinance isn't, the ordinance isn't necessarily just the answer, because you gotta...
Even the animal control thing is hard, I mean, we have somebody, because that's why, I agree, I think it would be hard to enforce it with ordinance. So, I think it'd be more approached to add a helping hand type issue, maybe.
I'm gonna like, to the type of something, try to organize something.
There's an organization called Just Serve, I think you'd call it, you might get them to...
We're gonna post on there. I guess I've never posted, I don't have enough posts to use. And you need to hold on on that.
No, it's, it's just, sounds like the spirit is that community effort.
Yeah.
Well, I like, Evelyn was your last client, she was saying, "How about let's have a, you know, be proud of your city day or something, and have a community part to me."
Oh, her block's part of the idea, is that what you're, is that what you're talking about? Or a different one, is that a different one? Evelyn was talking about, like, a block, or a queue.
Yeah, we talked about it, because I was like, I, because they should have, like, face all days, and we get told about it. Like, you think you know everybody, and then, like, working here, you're like, "I don't know who you are."
I don't know who you guys are.
We're in the first.
There is something called National Night Out, which is just for that, and it's in November, unfortunately. Unfortunately. Um, but, you know, basically, National Night Out is a big deal across the nation, all communities get together. Um, we've put them on in California, we've got the Highway Patrol down there, city police, county sheriff, Red Cross, cert jeans, uh, businesses come in to support donating free food, stuff like that, you know, and people just doing, doing other stuff. We've had, you know, a little kitty, kitty petting zoo, people brought in animals and stuff, and that's, you know, and, you know, like, in the city of Martinez back there, we had four locations for all the different neighborhoods and stuff to congregate at. And it's just one of those things, you know, as part of the National Night Out program, you get a lot of ideas from them.
Well, you know, even if we started simple, like cookies in the park or something, it doesn't have to be big, but...
I still really have problems, like, you have picnic tables and put them out there, and having it here.
Yeah, Evelyn has said, like, like, for an hour, like, block off her right here, and just, like, in the street.
Evelyn wants to head it up, too. See?
I have no problem with that. It's just, somebody needs to make some kind of a decision about doing something.
No, I agree.
I need a reflection.
I like trying to do community.
I'm like, all true.
Well, like, we usually do our movie night, if there are a lot of people ever been to one, and I tried to get the word out, but... Not doing it this year.
How did you do on your movie deal last year?
It, we, we get quite a few people, I mean, it's usually the same people, sometimes we get...
Like, quite a few, what's quite a few?
I've had as many as probably forty, that was kind of in the beginning, but usually it's about ten to fifteen.
I know I hit it a few times, like, we can come on, I'm like, "No, I like this in the chair." Why do you do this?
I don't know, you got, you got these kids that are playing ball, wrestling.
I know, there's always something, but there's also a lot of people that don't want to go in. And we do live in an older community, and they like to visit.
That's why I like the idea of Evelyn's, is, like, the chatting, I like to just, like, talk to people.
So, we think we should set a date, do cookies in the park, about what we're saying?
I think we should.
Okay, set a date.
Do you wanna, I don't know, just have the one picnic table, huh?
Well, for this year, it's gonna have to be stand over your own chair. I have been trying to get rid of weeks, which guys have been telling me I'm naughty.
So, you wanna do it on a weekend, like, say, Saturday?
Let me see, a weekend or weekday, what do you wanna do?
I would say a week, evening, going, well, I don't know, Saturday morning might be fun, actually, might get more people. But it's not gonna be the twenty-eight... But it's not gonna be the twenty eighth, 'cause I have the church party that day. I do a lot of parties.
I had that also.
Well, decide what you want.
We could do it right before school starts, let's do it like the Saturday before school starts.
Well, that starts in the middle of August.
Yeah.
The twelfth. I'm gonna be honest, after, um, July the first, I'm unavailable. On a weekend until April.
Well, I thought Jimmy has a surgery coming up, but we can't make that happen.
It does.
And no matter when you plan it, somebody's gonna be.
Well, just keep it simple, like do cookies in the, in, I don't know, what do you call that? Not a park.
In the grassy area.
We should put the flag up and say cookies by the flag pole.
There you go, Guy, you gotta take our swastika down and put up the American flag. If we have a red flag, that's lunch, pull it up.
And sit over there on the chair.
Looks pretty boring, we should invest in a nice.
I hear you, and then on the twelfth?
You're gonna take it down?
Well, you just have, I think, like, it's probably one thing, it is, they, you know, on it.
And put it up on the space we have.
I would like, yeah, but it's, you, you'll be gone? Yeah, I'm done after the thirty, like, starting the thirty first.
Then you don't matter anymore.
Yeah, that's what I said, I'm just saying, hey, I'll be gone, but.
But you can't go chat there.
Huh? I know.
Do you want it at night before then?
We're done that weekend, so you talk.
Like before, like.
Before? About city council night.
We could, do it at the council night. That's gonna be a budget incurring though, and, uh, Otter's coming about night too, so it might be a long night.
Okay.
Probably not a good one. To have fun.
Would you guys like the floor for a minute?
Just a minute. That'd be all right. We just got a question that, I called up, please let's talk to you about the water.
Okay, yeah.
We live on corner down there, I won't see it, it's something's going on. Anyways, the water comes to, our main water comes to the house, when Jess wasn't there built that house, he put a half inch line in there. Main water comes in there and goes through the house and then I have it coming back and a couple years ago, I had, you guys let me put a bathroom in my shop. Anyways, when I flushed the toilet and she's in the shower, she gets scalded and I get yelled at. So what we wanted to do, there's a couple of things, we want to put soft water in the house, but I don't wanna have soft water coming back in the back and I got, we have a farm back there, so we kind of, we're talking, so. Anyways, I didn't know if we needed to put another water line in, if that was okay, or tap into the one we have and make another line go through the house.
Well, I know Guy was trying to get ahold of you, I guess I don't know if he ever did.
If we break into the line, I'm gonna have to put another meter base and another access to it and build them to a whole different setup like that. If you break into your, your act where you come off, then you still only have the single meter base.
And so if we put another line in there and I have another hole built, that would be my access.
Well, generally, the volume of meters you have, what meter now?
What's the size of the line? If we cut into the main line, I've got a brand new meter base and it has to go in.
And I understand that.
I, if you go off yours right there, then you can go in, change the, you still got the one inch meter base and you can change your access, as many people do for young brothers.
I know, and that's, I just thought that would have to be.
That would have to be entered here as their yard.
And that would be the simplest, I just don't want to have a front yard. But on the back factor, where I have the line already.
She's gonna vomit her chair.
Anyhow, I, I came in the back, did one inch line, and I, if I have to pay for the whole thing, you know, thirty bucks, whatever we gotta pay, I mean, that's, that's what I gotta do. That's why I'm asking you, if I hook a line up back there, because I don't have to pay, I don't know if you remember or not, when I put it up, when I put the bathroom in the shop, you said I could do that, because I'm not adding any more to the sewer, so I don't, I don't like paying an extra sewer bill. Unless somebody puts in there, and that's what I believe you said, and it's okay. So I didn't know if I could do that with the water. Once I paid for the initial hookup, if I could just.
You got other people in town that have to, and we've always stuck with, if you've got a second hookup, that's a different hook up on the main line. You still have to pay for everything, for them.
Okay, and that's, that's a fine, I just wanna know.
Whether you run it from the one meter base or we put a new meter base, the only thing that we furnish is the meter base and the can.
Right, and, and I understand that, I just wanna know what you guys, tell me what I need to do or what I should do, that's all. So I mean, you know, if you drive by there and I'm doing something there, like, um, teach you one term. Anyways. And I understand that, I just wanna know what would be the best. If we're gonna do a meter thing, I don't know if I need to pick where it goes, if you guys got certain places that come off of that line or just tap right in.
Uh, it's, it's just the main line that they're gonna talk out and brand new entries.
So where else am I gonna put it? You can put it.
If, if we want to put a new one, anywhere you wanna put it.
I just need to contact him and how to do it. If I, if I go that way, I'll just have Guy come by and says, well, I wanna do it, and you're gonna send me a bill or?
Yeah, 'cause you have, you have all that. It's a couple of dollars for another. And then they put a stop and then it would be a monthly charge fee.
So you got half inch coming off the meter?
I got half inch going into the house.
What's coming off the meter? It's one inch, it's one inch coming off the meter to the house.
Right, and then you've got a half inch going into the house.
I, I would just change it right there, as opposed to the house.
Yeah, that was, I mean, I can.
No, 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 not the whole line, just where it hits the house, where it goes from half, uh, one inch to half inch, start making your changes there. That way you don't have, right up next to the house, that way you don't have to do, tear up your yard, you can fix your, your sizes, you can actually change, you know, maybe increase out, and inside, once inside the house, there may be larger pipes or not, but you can run a, uh, a separate, run a separate line then out to the shop off of the bat, that way it's not affecting the house. You know, where it comes out the back of the house, take it from there and tie it into the one inch. And that's what I was thinking about, just like, like I said, it was, well, I'm just thinking, what would be easier, put a new water line, I don't know, thirty bucks a month.
Water is thirty nine.
Thirty nine a month? That's probably solid better.
You just gotta get your options.
That's right, that's what I'm here for, I just wanna know what you guys are okay with, what you're not okay with, just in case, Guy could find what it is, so it'll be exactly what I'm doing. So we're doing what we have. Okay, all right, thank you.
So you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Now, you know, I just have to make a decision what I wanna do.
I'm not worried about you, but your lovely wife is the one I wanna keep.
I wanna keep out of juice. Okay, we'll leave you in peace, thank you very much.
You good?
Same thing as the true.
Take two.
It's nice to meet you, Evelyn. It's good to be sharing.
I got a lot.
Okay, item number ten, electronic payment option for city utilities.
So I was working with PayPal, they set something up, and then Guy actually was the one that told me that Bank of Commerce has this feature, and it's a lot easier to set up, but, um, and if you don't like this, I can continue trying to talk to PayPal, but, uh, so Bank of Commerce has a service that they, they would set up and provide a link, um, so I could put it at the bottom of the bill, and then people could go to that link to make some payment. However, there are a few risks, and I did have a question for you, 'cause I heard your husband did set up a website. Would it be possible to use that or?
Problem is, if, I don't, I don't know if it's worry something happened and nobody wanted or something and somebody bought the site, so that's creating a site.
Oh.
You can get it, you can get an official governmental or website, which is probably what we actually wanna do, if we could go jump through all the things to do it, but it's just really hard to do, do you know that?
Well, they can provide one, they have, this was a learning curve for them too, but it would be a monthly fee of fifteen dollars. And then there is like a couple of maintenance fees that are added. And then these little fees right here, these batch fees, are, um, any time somebody uses it, and then you batch it out at the end of the day. So, and then there are two point nine percent is what the interest is that they charge. We can charge three percent to the customer, which will uncover some of these fees, but in the end, it's still gonna cost us a little bit. And then the other thing that he was saying, um, and he put it in the email, is that because we don't have an official site, there is a risk, it is very low, because it's the only published place that the link would be on the bill, it's not out on them. But if somebody were to get that link and tried, these, how the blocks, where they tried to hit it, how many times you tried, it would rack up these fees, so it would be a little bit more, even though they're like, not much, ten cents, five cents, it could rack up, so. I would present that.
So how much would the customer be paying due to that?
No.
Just the three percent?
Yeah.
Have, have you noticed any interest of?
Well, there's lots of people that would like it, they say they would. I mean, it's, it, it's, even I am one of those people that, you know, we just aren't in the motion of going and depositing our mail, or our checks in the mail to pay our bills. Everybody wants electronic, more and more people, a lot of people don't even own checks. And so I feel like at some point, we have to come to the century and offer something. Does this have to be it? No, but it is not.
Do you wanna do our own setup? Because as somebody who just got hacked with their, their card again, who's had to replace it repeatedly, because I don't know who got it or how.
Well, I mean, all of that information is not there, you know, your bank has it out there, but, yeah.
The only advantage I found with the Bank of Commerce is was that they'll take any credit card.
Yeah.
No matter what, whereas the others should get tighter to do their things.
Where PayPal, it was getting a little, I haven't finished that.
I was just curious, just because it's, I mean, have you ever thought of doing, I don't know how, exactly how Venmo works on the back end, would you look at anything like that?
Venmo, if they know it's a business, will charge out bridges. So that's the only problem with Venmo.
They're part of PayPal.
Yeah.
I know what used to, that's all I know about Venmo, but we don't.
It's handy, that's for sure, but it can, yeah, it can.
And I don't know that there has to be a decision right now, other than I have been talking to this guy and it can't happen every.
So you know what the exact fee is?
No, because it's going to vary, like however many times you batch out and how much, how often you do that.
'Cause like, like at the school, if you pay for lunches, there's just a set fee every time you do it, so.
Well, and that's what, like, there would be a set fee to the customer, three percent of whatever they're paying.
Should we set up at the bank to say, okay, we're only gonna batch out on this date?
Yeah.
Every month, just, yeah, on that date. But then is that a pain? Because if someone pays after that, and they're like, I paid my bill, and you're like, but I, like, you know what I mean? So you'd almost have to batch out like twice.
Or you could just do it weekly. And they can set it up so that I will still see the account number and who paid it, so I know where it needs to be applied. I do think that this is probably the less complicated out of everything. And, you know, how often will it be used? I don't know. I, I mean, I know I've been caught up in this, like, oh, I gotta remember to take a check next time I leave my house, drop it off in the payment box. And even if you put it in the mail, like, it's six is where you're going. I see you trying, if it doesn't look like we're fifteen years from now.
That's a lot for them to tell them?
Yeah, I did, I can ask that, sure.
If you try, if it's, if it doesn't look like it's one.
And they can set you up with a credit card swiper inside, but I told them, I said, I don't think that's necessary, people just don't love me by that.
So approximately, how much is it gonna cost us to be amazing?
Eighteen, that's the limit?
Right? I'm thinking it's like a hundred and forty, like, all of these are estimated.
Oh, is this what this is?
You know, he estimated, like, everybody's using it. It's, it's not gonna be everybody.
Right.
So I guess max a hundred and forty, unless you get a bot in there one month? That's what I agree.
When you buy things online, sometimes like tickets, they have a convenience fee, is that how they're, those fees? You also have your percentage that your.
It's subtracted out.
Yeah, your percentage that they charge you to use it and then their convenience.
Yeah.
So would we want to recover those fees somewhere along the way?
That's the three percent you can add. That's the three percent they're adding.
You know what the three percent of their?
But it's not covering everything.
Right, but it's.
Like, you could do the percentage plus a security. Like, so you know, so like, we have to buy tickets for state events, so we have our tax, we have a, you know, the fee, our processing fee, I think is what they call it, and then you have a convenience fee on top of that. So it's like now they're like, three dollars per ticket, and so you can do that on top of that, yeah.
And you're just talking about direct transfer from their bank account to?
U.S.
Well, that's a really good idea too.
Are you talking about bank account or credit card transactions?
Paying your bill online.
Yeah, credit card or direct deposit?
It's all credit card.
All credit card, yeah, 'cause some, some places charge, the, whatever, whatever Visa or MasterCard charges them, they, that's what they charge, the maximum, they, that way they're always there.
Yeah, we did that in our business.
And of course, American Express charges the most.
Okay, so convenience fee, and what else?
So is there a way that's good to take from directly to your bank account, to the city bank accounts do that?
I think they might charge you a, a transfer fee?
No, not on a, not on a, not on an EFT, my wife gets, my wife's a property manager, accountant for Kennedy Wilson Property Manager.
Yeah, you're asking about like electronic funds.
Yeah, electronic, yeah, she...
Like paying what's at your bank.
Yeah, she does, that's all she does is electronic transfers for most of the stuff. And there's no, you, banks do not like, banks don't, aren't charging for that because they will lose the accounts, if they start charging anybody that has...
Gonna say, I feel like it's gonna be a no, just because this is a credit card service.
You're paying it.
There's lots of people that need to ask somebody to set that up.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask. I'll take this question.
No, your PIN, this PIN, a PIN, it's on the floor.
Yeah, like banks, you can do that, but do a... But I know that they still mail us checks, and sometimes it's something a little bit hard to go through.
I pay most of my bills online by transferring, like, you put your account number...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, be possible to do that, and stop, help people out. Some people don't wanna use a card, they would like, wanna do it directly, set it up on a monthly, you don't even see it go out of your account, you just set it up...
Oh, automatically, right?
I don't like that, would be needed, because, but I like to, some things offer that, so it's not a, I'd like to do that. Cause you set it up through your bank to do that.
Some of this, I feel like it has to be provided through the website, like an autograph, that would be set up through the website.
To my bank, allowing you to set it up, mine tells me, hey, maybe just, there's...
Yeah.
Like just go down and, I don't know, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you can go to your bank and set it up that way, like an online building.
That's what I'm wondering, that, that, something like that.
Okay, we're all done with that one?
Yep.
Evelyn, do you have something?
I don't think...
She's just here to comment.
I've got some questions for the lawyer, but I don't wanna be on the camera.
Oh, good, that's, that's good, close meeting there.
Good.
Somebody's got to pay the motion figure, it's gonna be more, I'll second.
All right, get out some fish.